Just a quick shout out to acknowledge that TV Santa Barbara is going to be celebrating our 50th year here in 2025. We have some incredible activities and events to commemorate 50 years of community media in Santa Barbara. A couple shout outs to the TV Santa Barbara team who is bringing this live broadcast to Jerry, Josh, and Hap. I know how much you put into this, and it's such an important event to bring this conversation to our community. Sylvia Arribey, thank you. She's providing the Spanish language translation over to those of you in the audience tonight. And the rebroadcast that we will polish up and air on community television will include Spanish language in addition to the multilingual closed captioning that we already have on TV Santa Barbara. A quick shout out to tell you a little bit about why TV Santa Barbara is important. It's a platform for local voices where different perspectives can be heard, and tonight is a perfect example of that, a candidate form brought to you by your local community access station. So, thank you for joining us. These candidate forms are really important. It provides the voters a chance to hear directly from the candidates. So, thank you so much for being here. A big thank you to those in the audience. We have KUIT, the Santa Barbara Independent, and a few others that I see. So, thank you for being here. The city of Santa Barbara has been a partner with community television since its very inception, nearly 50 years ago, and we thank you for your continued support of this community treasure. And then I would also like to say thank you for your commitment and for your dedication to serving our beautiful city that we all love. Your willingness to step up and run for city council demonstrates your passion for making a positive impact on Santa Barbara. Your leadership and vision are essential for the future of our community, and we are grateful for your willingness to be here tonight and to serve. So, on behalf of us all, thank you. Best of luck in this upcoming election, and thank you for your support of community television. Jerry and Josh, take it away.
Thanks, Eric. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to the first Santa Barbara City Council election forums of the 2024 campaign season. I'm Jerry Roberts. This is my colleague, Josh Molina, sitting next to me. We'll co-moderate tonight's discussions. We also want to second the motion in thanking Sylvia Arribey, who's providing our Spanish language translation. We heard from the District One candidates a little earlier. In just a moment, we'll hear from the those in District Three. Just a reminder that tonight's forum is cosponsored by Newsmakers, the Santa Barbara Talks Podcast, and by our host, TV Santa Barbara, which obviously is live streaming the event. Josh?
All right. Thank you, Jerry. Before we introduce the candidates, just a little explanation of how we're going to proceed. Our purpose is to give each of the candidates the chance to state their views on major issues facing the city and in their districts. We also hope to draw out some key differences between the candidates to help voters make their decisions. We're going to keep the discussion a little loose in order to take time for follow-up questions as well as responses from the other candidates. This debate's going to last about an hour. We've asked, we're asking all the candidates to limit their responses to two minutes, and at the end, you'll have two minutes to offer closing statements. Jerry?
And so, let me introduce our candidates. On my right, first incumbent council member, Oscar Gutierrez, and the challenger, Tony Becerra. Thank you both for coming. Thank you both for running, putting yourselves out there, which is, you gotta be crazy to do anyway, but thank you for that. Oscar, let me start with you by asking, why should voters support you for another term? Why do you deserve reelection?
Thank you, Jerry and Josh. I appreciate you. Thank you, Sensei Becerra, for participating in this. I believe I deserve to be reelected because I've, my passion for the city has inspired me to not just do the position that the people have elected me to, but to surpass it. So, I say that because, and I actually encourage you to fact-check me, that I have become the most responsive and accessible city council member in our city's history. And I say that because if you look at how many emails I've responded, how many meetings I've attended, how many phone calls I've had, how many events I've gone to, how many social media posts I've responded to, I tallied them up to over 27,000. And it's, I mean, it's been noted in the media and among the public that, quote unquote, ubiquitous? Ubiquitous?
Ubiquitous.
Yeah, thank you. English is a second language for me, so forgive me. And I want to further continue making history for my community, for my district, and for the city. And I feel like especially now more than ever, it's extremely important that the people feel like there's somebody that they chose to represent them is doing the work and showing up and being the voice that they trust. And I want to continue the hard work that I've already accomplished, like providing resources and services for our community that hasn't had it before. And I want to make sure that I can continue that in the next four years.
All right. Thank you. Tony, please spell ubiquitous. No, just kidding. Tony, what would you do differently that would make you a more effective representative? Why should voters vote for a change?
Well, I think the biggest part of that or the biggest focus for me would be is leadership, you know, taking people with me along the path. I've been a mentor, a trainer for years. I've helped people have a lot of success in different endeavors, whether it's through school, through business, through, you know, raising families, you know, I take my life experiences and put it to work. So, I think when I look at what's going on and where we need to go, we can't just do it by just going to events. We need to create events. We need to create a new buzz, you know, allow people to see a vision and then follow that. Being an entrepreneur, that's what I do, you know. I try to create new programs and try to get kids involved with things that they wouldn't normally think about doing. So, even at the nonprofit that I, that I'm the president of in Galita is, we're constantly looking for, we have kids in the gym, but we want to get more kids. We want to get more girls involved. We want to get kids from less fortunate families to be in our gym, you know. So, we're always looking for new ways to do it. And I think the leadership ability that I have, the experiences I have running a business, the experience I have as being a father, and, you know, really use that to my advantage to help our community grow.
Okay. Thank you. Let's talk about housing. That's going to be a few of our questions today. Help us understand your personal perspective when it comes to your housing situation. So much of the decisions made at City Hall have to do with housing, with tenants, with renter protections. What is your personal housing situation, and how does that inform how you will serve either another term or on the council? Let's start with you, Council Member Guterres.
Thank you, Josh. So, I'm privileged enough to say that I am able to live in a house owned by my parents, who sacrificed so much to be able to live the American dream here. So, I live with my mom, who is elderly and disabled, and as much as she tries to argue that I'm not taking care of her, I am taking care of her and likewise. So, I'm privileged in that sense, but I don't take it lightly because as I ran the first time and I met with the people of the Third District, they consistently told me that housing was a major conflict in their life that made it hard for them to live here. So, I promised them, I gave them my promise that I would serve as a council member to uphold their request to make it easier to live here, especially when it came to housing. And since then, I've supported, you know, tenant right issues like just cause eviction, the restriction to the rent evictions, also right to council, also tried to pass a rent cap. I'm supportive of my colleagues having a 25% affordable housing stipulation in the La Cumbre Plaza Shopping Center or Apartment Complex. So, those, that's my stance on housing as of now.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Tony, same question.
So, housing is, so personally, you know, I rent. I've rented since I moved out of my mom's house when I was 20 years old. So, I've raised, you know, family in Santa Barbara. You know, we lived on Figaro Street. We moved to Islay. We've been in Galita. We bounced around, you know, trying to, you know, improve ourselves along the way. You know, I'm the youngest at 12, so I see the balance. I see that some people, some of my family members had some success. Some of us are in the middle, and some of us on the lower end. And so, I realized, you know, where people are hurting, you know, and most families are struggling, you know, where we're trying to, you know, both parents are working. Who's watching the kids? You know, how do we pay for daycare? All these issues are a daily thing for us, you know, going paycheck to paycheck. I'm a business owner. When you're a business owner, you know, especially small business, a third of the population of business, small business owners make money. A third break even, and a third lose money. But, you know, I've been in all three, actually. So, the process is really about trying to find the best solution for our families in Santa Barbara. I deal with a lot of parents that come and see me and tell me their woes. And so, I'm, for my business is based, I'm right downtown, what I call downtown State Street of the West Side. I'm in San Andres and Mitchell Torreino. You know, people come and say hi to me all the time. I've been there for 28 years. And so, my ear has been generational, listening to their complaints, listening to their struggles. And I think that with the experience that I have, I can, you know, help find solutions in our neighborhood to make it, you know, affordable for everybody.
Okay. Thank you for that. Let's talk a little bit about rent control. As you know, Proposition 33 on the November ballot could make, have a big effect on rent control by taking off the Costa Hawkins law, which has restricted local government for some years. Let me ask both of you, what is your position on Proposition 33? And if your position prevails in November, what impact do you see it having on Santa Barbara? Tony?
Well, so, I never thought I'd be in this position, first of all. You know, I'm a business owner, a family guy, a coach. I was a coach for 21 years in our high school. So, I don't know all the, all the ins and outs of what politics are going on right now, but, but I'm willing to find the answers, you know. As a mentor, I have kids come up to me that have a lot of issues going on. I don't always have the answer, but I reach out to people that do have the answers, and I find solutions for them. So, that's what I'm going to do with this. I do understand, though, taking away some of the, what are they, some, taking away some of the articles in that, in Prop 33, would make it difficult or make it less attractive for new builders to come in because they're exempt now for 15 years on the, with, with, not having to worry about rent control, but this would get rid of that. So, what would be the incentive to come in and build, especially when most of their housing, from what I understand the city's doing, is looking more towards lower income, which I'm completely for. But if you take away the incentive for the builder, then nothing's going to happen. So, I don't want to be in a situation where, where, you know, nobody's coming and building new housing. Now, we're stuck in trying to create something different. So, I mean, I'm up for the challenge, but we just got to figure out something that's going to make sense. And I think taking away some of the exemptions from new builders is not, I don't think is the answer.
All right. We'll put you down as leaning no. Oscar, where are you on Prop 33, and what impact would it have?
Well, as I said, I'm supportive of making sure that the community can affordably live here. And Prop 32, 3, Prop 33, sorry, dyslexia kicking in. That's intended to help the people be able to live more affordably. And I know that, you know, it could run the risk of it deterring some developers to want to build. But if you look at the history of the cost of living and the value of property in California, and specifically in Santa Barbara, it's only gone up regardless of what housing ordinance or law has been implemented. It's only gone up, it's only skyrocketed, to be honest. So, when I hear things like that, I, it's hard for me to believe it, just because, just look at the numbers and look at the history of the cost of living and housing. It's only gone up no matter what law is implemented. So, if this one's meant to help, then let's do it. And yeah, hopefully it doesn't deter developers to want to build because they keep saying they won't pencil out. But, you know, as much as I want to see eight-story apartment buildings in Santa Barbara, I think that needs to pass.
Okay. Thank you. Staying on the issue of rent control, let's say Prop 33 passes, and new buildings, new construction would also have to comply with local rent control restrictions. What would a rent control ordinance look like for you if you were on the council? Would you support a 2% rent stabilization cap? Would you support 3%, 4%, nothing? What would a local rent stabilization ordinance look like? We'll start with you, Council Member Guterres.
Thank you, Josh. So, I believe that, you know, the phrase rent control is radioactive. I'm pushing for a rent cap, which isn't necessarily rent control, and I hate to split hairs, but it's not. So, a rent cap would just limit how much a property owner can raise the rent per year. So, I've tried to pass a 2% rent cap in the past. I didn't have enough support for it then. I'm hoping now that some years have passed that my colleagues will see that it's needed. And if 2% is too low, then let's negotiate. I've met with the board of realtors. I helped form the housing crisis ad hoc with my other council members, and we've met with over 20 housing stakeholders in our community. And we've gathered their input, their ideas, their concerns about housing, and how we as city council members can address that. And we're consistently just trying to, in a way, just be receptive to what they're saying, but also negotiate something. And as I said, I'm for the rent cap, and if that means it's somewhere between 2 and 10, then let's talk about it. Let's come to an understanding.
Okay. Thank you. Tony, same question?
Well, like you said, between 2 and 10, right now, the state is at 10 roughly, you know. So, I think my biggest concern with the cap is that it just, I think it discourages people from coming in and building in our area. I have a personal friend that I met with who said, you know, he had owned an apartment building for quite a few years, and as soon as he and his friends heard about rent control, the prices immediately started going up. Since they've been, since they mentioned rent control, prices have been going up. So, and I personally rented from a property owner who raised the rent $100 in 12 years. And the last tenant, the last landlord that I had raised it $185 in 14 years, you know. So, it's like, not everybody's gouging everybody, you know. But the people that get hurt the most are going to be those mom and pops that try to give the good deals to families, and then they can no longer do that because unfortunately, their property value is based off how much money is coming in. And if they're now have to get up to market, then guess what's going to happen? All those people who are getting the deals and no rent raises, their price is going to go up. It's not going to make it cheaper. It's going to make it more expensive. So, that's a personal experience for me. I've talked to other people that experienced the same thing. And yeah, we do, you know, you can't, you know, move out of a place at $2,500 and go to $6,000, you know, which I've seen that on the West Side. But, you know, we, there should be something in there to protect tenants, but not something where, you know, getting more government control of something that's already been established by the state.
So, you're somewhere between 2 and 10%?
Well, I think, you know, what we have in order right now is great. I'm, hopefully, inflation drops a little bit more, and we'll see, you know, some lesser raises.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm looking at you.
Okay. Next question. We obviously have been dealing with a term called rent evictions, where property owners will, you know, buy a building, tenants will get evicted because a lot of the Santa Barbara housing stock is really old, and there's been a lot of deferred maintenance. And so, property owners will evict tenants and remodel, rebuild, renovate. And after they do that, the rents go up, and they go up in a way that a lot of those people can't afford to move back in. Would you support a right to return to that unit at the same rent as when they were, when their lease was terminated because of the renovations? City Council dealt with this. It's going to come up again. Would you support a right to return at the same rent after a rent eviction? Tony, we'll start with you.
Well, I don't know enough about it to really give you the best answer, but all I know is that, you know, when I had to remodel my business, and I had to put, you know, new floors in, and I had to comply with the restrictions that the city puts on me, it wasn't just a quick fix round. It was a guys meeting and doing it, but it was a huge expense for me. And so, as a result, I had to rate prices because I put myself in more debt, you know. So, I could see, I mean, I understand that we want to have it the same, but if you want, you know, a better place, if you want to have improvements, if you want to have, you know, a safe place to live, sometimes you have to pay a little bit more. I'm not saying they could gouge them. I mean, like I said before, if I'm renting for $2,500, the next person's renting for $6,500, heck no, I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. But I think as long as, you know, it's reasonable, but the, you know, the property owner is, is, has an obligation to do this stuff, but maybe there's, maybe there's a fix. Maybe there's a medium where we can get the, get the city to give them some credits for doing it, and then they're not gouging the new tenants that are coming in or the old tenants that are coming back. So, if they can come up with some type of system where they get a credit for doing that, so you reward the landlord for not raising the rent so much, for keeping it good, and then it solves a problem instead of constantly making them the bad guy.
Okay. Thank you. Council Member Guterres?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah. Essentially, would you support a tenant being able to return to their unit after a property owner evicts tenants to renovate the building? It is a thing that is pejoratively referred to as a rent eviction. And the property owners say, hey, we're investing a lot into this. Of course, we're going to have to raise the rent. But what happens is people can't afford those new rents, and then they leave Santa Barbara. Would you support a guaranteed right to return at the same rent as when their original lease terminated?
Yes. When that issue came to us previously, I was for it. We didn't have enough support by my colleagues on the council at the time, and I'm willing to pursue it again because I believe that uprooting families, again, I have the privilege of not knowing or not living under the fear of eviction because by the time I was born, my parents owned the house that I live in. But my siblings and my parents, they had been evicted, and they do know what that fear is and what that rejection feels like, and it's traumatic. And I don't believe it's fair to just completely uproot a family and, or a person, and essentially have them start over because at the very least, just allow them to come back if they choose to because some of them, you know, they have their whole life revolving around that location where they live. So, yeah, I'm completely for it.
Okay. One more question for me.
Can I be clear on that? I'm not in favor of kicking people out either, you know. And, you know, to, I have quite a few people that I know personally, including my sister, that they were kicked out. They did a renovation. They kicked them out. And some of them, I had one, one of my students' parents, they actually stayed during the entire renovation. And the landlord wanted to kick them out, even promised to give them a different place. But they stayed, and so they used their rights as tenants, which we need to, you know, support and enforce. And so, they got to stay in it while they did it around them. They're still in the same location. So, I'm definitely in favor of keeping families where they want to be, but I'm saying that, you know, it's real expenses. It's not like, you know, a couple hundred bucks. It's, you know, it's substantial to the, to the bottom line. And, you know, and if you expect, you know, landlords to keep the rent low, you need to support some of the stuff they're doing. And again, not gouging, but making it reasonable increases.
Okay. Thank you. One more question from me related to housing. La Cumbre Plaza, there is a big proposal, 642 units. A lot of the housing Santa Barbara has approved has been market rate. We have a 10% inclusionary housing ordinance. With a big development like this, this is a significant amount of housing. What percentage of below-market-rate housing, if you're elected to the council or if you get another term, would you say that development should have? Should it be 10%, 20, 30, 40, 50? I mean, what percentage of below-market rate should that housing development have? And we will start with you, Council Member Guterres.
Thank you. Thank you. So, when the 10% that we currently have now was first proposed to us on council, I proposed 25% because that's what other cities had passed. And I didn't get any support for it. People thought that was crazy. But when I heard my colleagues, Council Member Friedman and Council Member Jordan, proposed that the La Cumbre Shopping Center Housing Development Plan should have a 25% inclusionary housing stipulation, I was inspired by them. I was actually really, you know, just impressed that they were willing to make that recommendation. And so, even though at the time then, we settled at 10, I initially proposed 25, and I'll continue to propose that and higher if possible. And again, I acknowledge the fact that it might scare some developers from building their multi-apartment complexes around our city, but it's got to be equitable.
25%. Tony, same question?
Well, just to start off with, I really don't like the idea, you know. I'm born and raised in Santa Barbara, you know. I like the hometown, you know, the small-time feel. You know, I grew up on the mesa, you know, and it was like, you know, it's like going visiting a neighbor when you went into a store shop, you know. So, I like that, you know. I know that La Cumbre Plaza area is really has a dense, you know, car population going through there. You could never find a spot to park at Five Points, you know. It's ridiculous. And when you add 690 units, is that what it is?
50, yeah.
650, 670, it's all the same at that point, you know. How many more residents and how many more cars are in that area? So, I'm not really in favor of that whole project, but if I had to say, you know, how many are going to be, you know, set aside for a low-income, you know, I don't know the actual numbers, but I would say somewhere probably between what he had recommended, originally 10, 12% to 25%. I'm not sure, but I'm going to definitely get my team to do some research and see what that number is. But anyhow, you know, I think-
You're going to miss Macy's, that's what you're saying.
Well, I'm going to miss, you know, the opportunity that Macy's gives, you know. Again, being a business owner, you know, you drive down certain streets in certain cities, and it's small business, small business, small business, you know. When you take away business areas, then where are the small businesses going to go? Where are they going to have an opportunity? So, you know, I think, you know, we don't even talk about La Cumbre Plaza and their design. I think it's horrible, you know. The businesses that are thriving are the ones that are facing the parking lot. Everything facing inward and the Paseo part of it is struggling. So, I think they need to reface that and make it more accessible. But that's a whole nother topic. I think, you know, having, having, thinking about the density up there, I mean, the Five Point Center is the busiest, the busiest intersection in Santa Barbara. And what are we going to do adding that many homes in that area and that many people? I mean, think about, you know, school time when you're trying to shuttle your kid to school. It's going to be crazy. So, anyhow, that's just my two cents on that. Thank you.
Point of clarity. So, just to be clear, that the developers are still going to have businesses on the ground floor. That's still going to be all business. It's just the floors above it that are going to be housing, just to be clear.
All right. Let's, I want to ask about a couple of District Three specific issues. As you know, there's always a huge amount of debate and discussion about State Street. But what about San Andres Street? What should be done to bring more economic vitality to the main business corridor of District Three? Tony?
Well, so, that's the main reason why I'm here today. You know, I've been on San Andres for 28 years. When I got there, I think I punched myself because, if you don't know, I teach karate. I'm a martial arts instructor, wrestling coach for many decades. But when I moved there, I thought I made the wrong decision because when I got there, within a week, there was a shooting at the corner. A lot of the businesses were boarded up. But since I've been there, you've seen a lot of change. About 20 years ago, they redid some of the sidewalks, which was great for a moment, for about a year. Then the city stopped coming in and cleaning. They stopped, they removed some of the benches. They, you know, took away some of the garbage cans early on. And so, it really made it more difficult for the businesses that are there, you know. So, in our area of San Andres, during the winter, at 5:30, you, it's dangerous to be on the street. It's dark. You know, we have these beautiful mangolia trees, but the canopy is below the light, so the light doesn't hit the sidewalk. It's not, it's not a new problem. It's an-
It's not, it's not a new problem, it's an ongoing problem. So, you know, having bad lighting, I have, um, uh, a lady came up to me the other day and said that she tripped on the sidewalk because she couldn't see and she smashed her face open, you know? So, um, these are real issues. So improving the sidewalks, across the street from my business, there was the nice red brick, they removed the brick because of the roots of the tree and they put black asphalt and, and painted it red like no one's gonna notice, but that's the type of attention we're getting on the west side. I think we need to do is, we need to put, invest a little money, there's money going everywhere into Santa Barbara and to infrastructure, nothing's coming to the west side. And, and, you know, um, my opponent here, Oscar, you know, he's, I love Oscar, by the way, you know? You know, I just love this guy. But, you know, the thing is, is that we need to do things that are make, uh, make a, a, a definite change on the west side, and I think lighting is gonna be a big deal. People are racing down San Andres Street at forty miles an hour, I have kids trying to cross the street, so we need like something to slow them down. There should be a crosswalk on Sola, you know, that, when the trucks park on the street, they can't get past, because if people can't see, they're inching out, trying not to get hit. So I think having, you know, more accessibility for the, for the pedestrians around there is a bigger deal than, you know, than some of the, the bike lanes that block access to businesses, you know? So I think, uh, there's a lot of work to be done and, you know, my, my idea is that, you know, with my entrepreneurial spirit is to get people involved, not just, you know, the businesses in the area which they support me, but to also get the community behind us so that we can make changes that make a difference to them.
All right, thank you. Oscar?
Thank you. So I do love the businesses on the west side. I, I grew up going there and also grew up going to Sensei Becero's dojo. And, um, I can tell you that, you know, I've consistently pushed our city staff to allocate more funding and resources and attention to San Andres because I, I understand and respect that certain areas of town draw, um, our biggest money generator, which is tourism, but areas like San Andres have consistently fared better than those other business areas like State Street and such. Like during the debris flow and the fires, State Street suffered a huge loss of revenue because the tourists stopped coming. But San Andres didn't drop much. Why? Because that's where the locals go. The locals didn't go anywhere, we were here, you know, we were shopping there. So the businesses and the business owners on State Street are dedicated and loyal and so are the customers, and they deserve more respect than what they're getting right now. And I can show you all the correspondence, I have all the emails that, in, in the city council meetings where I've brought it up consistently, even just this Tuesday, I brought it up again with the new measure I. If it passes, I wanna make sure there's a specific line item to, for money to go to all the business districts that are not State Street, that are not the waterfront, that are not Montecito, they need to go to these other areas because they deserve it. And, um, I've, during the pandemic, I helped the Greater Hispanic Chamber, uh, create the weekends on the west side where we had block parties every weekend during the summer. I also created, uh, TV commercials for every business on San Andres for free, didn't charge them at all. I promote events that they have. I've been making sure that, that I'm there for the west side businesses and I'll continue to do so and do more if I'm reelected.
All right, thanks, uh, Councilman.
Oh, also, can you let me know that resident that injured themselves? Cause if they did injure themselves because of something the city should have taken care of, then she's, she has the ability to get-
I think they're working on that.
Okay.
That was the first question I asked them.
Thanks.
I, I have great sympathy for people who trip and fall on the sidewalk. But, um, let me ask you, uh, should the four hundred block of State Street, uh, which I believe is in the third district, uh, be closed to cars, uh, like the rest of, uh, the promenade? Tony?
Well, first of all, let me just start with that. So, you know, being a local, you know, and if you're really a local, one of the best, one of the things we love to do is cruise State Street, you know, which we can't do right now, but, but I still do it, I still cruise the boulevard, you know, and I drive up State Street. And, you know, we go under the bridge that they spent millions of dollars widening the sidewalks, and then you come up onto the four hundred block of, of, uh, State Street and it's the ugliest block on State. And I didn't know until I started doing this process that that's in our district, and then it kinda made sense, you know? If you neglect one area, you're gonna neglect the other. So, look, when we come out from underneath that freeway, we should be, that should be the crown gem of the south coast, coast. There should be maybe an arts that says, you know, welcome to historic Santa Barbara, you know, all lit up, the sidewalks clean, you know? Right now, there's buildings that have plywood on the windows, they've been there for, for decades, literally, with the old ESOS. How is that part of the ordinance that you could put wood as, as, as your, as your storefront? It doesn't make sense. So what we need to do is we need to be more proactive in, in that business area and pushing them to, to improve it or having the city behind them because that is really the welcome mat to our town. It's not the beachfront, it's that part, that's where it all starts. So I think, uh, you know, the fact that it's, it's been neglected, I would definitely make that a focal point as we go forward, you know, trying to improve that area, light it up at night, that thing should look like Christmas, you know, every single day of the week, you know? But, uh, that's where my stance on that, definitely not closed.
Cars or no, no cars?
No, it's not closed now because that's the only way you can go right, you have to go up a block in order to go to the east side. So if you closed it right there, what would they do? They'd have to turn left and turn right, 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 you know? It does, there's, it doesn't make sense to close more access right there, especially if you're trying to get to the east side of Santa Barbara.
Thanks, Oscar?
Yeah, I believe it should be closed, and the reason I say that is because I've actually gone to every business on the four hundred block of State Street and I've asked the business owners, how do you feel about it? And they all say we need to be closed, just like the five hundred block, it's not fair. They've said it themselves, these are the business owners, these are the employees of those businesses, saying it's not equitable, that they get the benefit of having State Street closed to cars and the extra attention they could give to their clients and they can't. And if you've looked at the businesses on the four hundred block, there's been more closures on the four hundred block that's open to traffic now than the other blocks. They, just specifically on the four hundred block. So I, to me, that's proof positive that having it open to cars is actually bad for business as opposed to good for business. And, and I've looked into it, I looked at the demographics that those businesses are catering, catering to are the demographics that are spending money. The demographics that are wanting cars back on State Street, they're not the demographic spending money. So even if we did open State Street back up to cars, the people that are wanting it open to cars again aren't gonna be spending money at those stores because it's not, those stores aren't for them. They're not geared for them, they're not targeting them. So we need to be able to respect that and, and, and encourage it, not deter it.
One quick follow-up, Oscar, you are an incumbent, you are on the council, why isn't the four hundred block closed to cars? You've been in this position already.
Thank you. Uh, so city staff has been adamant that it is imperative for our first responders to have access to that block, but I've, I've met with them several times and discussed whether making Gutierrez and Haley Street two-way streets again, right now they're one-ways. If we make them two-way streets, it'll open up the flow and make it easier for our first responders to be able to get around State Street. And, I mean, I think that'll be the, the compromise and the solution to that.
Okay, uh, let's, uh-
Can I say something on that? So, I mean, yeah, he's been in, so when he's talking about all the businesses, when he's talking about businesses, the people that I talk that own businesses on State Street, it's, it's a battle between the bars and restaurants and the retail. I've, I've actually was in a, in a car when there were, um, when I was talking to a friend and they had a business for twenty-seven years on State Street and they're like, get me the heck out of here. I can't, I want this to go to my daughter and I can't sustain it with the way it's working now with it being closed. And they're willing to pay three times the rent in a different location of town than to stay on State Street. That tells you a lot about State Street. And another reason why a lot of people aren't going to State Street is because it's looked so rundown, who wants to hang out in, in, in a hole?
Yeah. My next question's gonna be about broader State Street. Um, let's talk about State Street and the State Street Master Plan. It's taken three years, they're finally gonna come forward with some sort of proposal. Uh, what do you think of the work of this committee, this very large committee that has been working on the future of State Street? How would you assess their, um, efforts and their success levels, uh, so far? We, why don't we start with you, Councilmember Gutierrez?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
How would you assess the effectiveness of the State Street Master Plan Committee? It's taken three years, we're in a similar situation. Are they doing a good job or, or not? What is your perspective?
Well, it's a volunteer position, so it's, it's, it's definitely doing what we're planning for it. I mean, this isn't something easy, right? This is theoretically a plan that we're gonna implement that's gonna last a hundred years. So they wanna make sure that they're making the right decision. And I'm supportive of each and every one of those members, I, I vetted each and every one of them and, and I've been watching the meetings and, and as of right now, it's obviously a pretty, pretty, uh, contentious issue, but again, if you spend the time and you talk to the majority of the businesses, they, they want it closed, they want it closed, the majority of them do. And I've met with the Chamber of Commerce, Hispanic Chamber, the, uh, Food and Beverage Committee, uh, the Downtown Santa Barbara Organization, all consistently said they want the street closed because it benefits their business. Now, let's take a moment and ask the business owners that are claiming that they're struggling, how much responsibility for the struggle that they're facing falls on them and the way they're running their business? Let's just take a moment to think about that and ask them, let's get real, you know? I have a business myself, I have my own small media business, I can easily blame whoever I want for not making enough money. Ultimately, it depends on how I'm running my business and whether or not the clients enjoy it.
Okay, thank you. Tony, how would you assess the work of the State Street Master Plan Committee and have they been successful at solving the problems of what's happening on State Street?
Well, I don't think they, they've solved anything at this point, right? So I, I don't think they're doing a great job, I understand it's all volunteer and, and that's tough, but I think, uh, you know, one of the main things that, you know, we need to think about is compromise. How does this work for everybody? Um, you know, I worked in the bars downtown Santa Barbara for fifteen years, so, you know, I've seen the years, you know, I've seen an example, fiestas, you know, the parades going up and down, there's two hundred thousand people on State Street, you know? That's the best Black Friday any business can have, you know? That many people from, you know, eight o'clock in the morning till four, all day long, actually. And then what did they do during fiestas? They would, about five or six o'clock, they would close down Lower State Street and open it up as a promenade, allow people to do the crawl all over State Street, and if you're a local, you know what the crawl is, you know? But, uh, the idea was, it was a compromise, and I think even now, there's a possibility of doing that. If we can, if we can somehow work, let the business do business and then allow people to enjoy the promenade, uh, they do it on farmer market, uh, farmer's market night, they do it on special event nights, they do, they could do it on weekends. The thing is, is that, you know, there has to be a compromise that works for everybody. You can't just pick one business because all those businesses produce tax dollars that the city desperately needs, as we know now because we're in such a bad state right now. So the idea is to create more, generate more tax revenue, not, you know, not adding in that, a tax, but use what we can, what we can maximize what we have now, and I think that's gonna be through compromise, not through, you know, choosing one side or the other.
Okay, thank you. Let's, uh, stick with State Street and the issue of housing. We know that developers say it's really tough to build housing downtown, the city does not allow enough density, we have a height limit, and we've seen developers choose to build hotels instead of housing. Oscar, you're an incumbent, you're familiar with this issue. Uh, what, what can the city do? What will you do if elected to another term to incentivize developers to build housing downtown? Cause right now, they say, city doesn't allow enough density for it to be profitable, for, for it to pencil out for us. So what would you do to encourage housing downtown?
Uh, I'm for it. I, I think downtown is the, is the exact location where the, uh, dense housing should go because of access to retail stores and, uh, public transportation. Uh, I just believe that it needs to be affordable at, at a certain point because if we wanna encourage the workforce to live here, if we wanna have more people living here, you're gonna have to have more people to work the businesses that they're gonna be frequenting, and if they can't afford to work those businesses, to work those jobs, then they're not gonna be able to live here. So we need to just make sure that it's affordable and, I mean, I'm willing to talk to these developers and, and hear them out, uh, and see what kinda compromise we can go to. But, um, but yeah, it needs to be affordable and, and again, I'm all for, uh, building up, uh, around State Street. Um, yeah, it's just something that, that needs to happen.
Okay, Tony?
Can you repeat the question again?
Yeah, developers say it's very difficult to build housing downtown because the city does not allow enough density and there are height limit restrictions. So we've seen situations where developers have a choice and they build hotels instead, they convert the property to hotels. What would you do as a member of the council to incentivize, to make it easier, to make it more profitable for these developers to say, yes, let's build housing downtown? I think everybody wants affordable housing downtown. The question is, what can you do to actually, as a city, to say, let's make this easier for you to build it?
So I think, uh, you know, knowing people that have tried opening businesses downtown, the city makes it very difficult, there's a lot of red tape. Uh, the expense of all, all the, the, the stuff you have to go through in order to get that door opened, sometimes it deters people. Um, though I know there was plans to put businesses in at the Paseo, at the old Macy's and, and the red tape, red tape, red tape, and the, finally, the, the business owners decided not to open there. So I, I think reducing red tape is gonna be a big part of that. Also, you're talking about, um, the housing, who should live there? Well, I think that would be a great opportunity, not only to, um, to put housing there, but this thing about not just renters, how about ownership? You know, I have a friend that lives in Galita, they make twenty-five thousand dollars a year and yet they own a condo. They're, they're set, he's had it for fifteen years and he's, he's paying on it and it's gonna be his family's wealth later on down the line. So maybe we can work a compromise out with people to find, if we're gonna do low housing, let's do low housing ownership, give people a chance to have equity, because I know I don't have it in, in a home. So the thing is, is I would like to have an opportunity to do that, you know? So I know other people, they, they're hard workers just like I am, they have families, they're putting money aside when they can, but if, you know, if, if renting is all the future they have, I think we're, we're, we're kidding ourselves. This city's never gonna change, but if you can put some equity, give them a chance to have something and their kids could have something down the line, that's generational, that's what we're looking for. When you look up, think about a hundred years down the line, right? It's gonna be ownership, not renting, that's gonna be saving the city.
Okay, fair enough. Um, we got about fifteen minutes left, uh, and, uh, I'm gonna just ask you to, um, shorten your answers just a little bit, particularly on these next two questions, which are, um, yes or no? So give me thirty, thirty seconds after the yes or no. First, uh, do you think all eight blocks of the current promenade should remain closed to cars? Oscar?
I'm willing to come to a compromise about that, uh, but for the most part, yes.
All right, Tony?
Uh, no, I, like I said before, I, I, I've worked down there, I've seen, you know, the, the city thrive, you know, and I've been part of, you know, celebrations down there that were amazing, you know? During fiestas, I still have a booth at Deleguer Plaza, we sell taquitos and guacamole, best in the world, by the way, so.
Plenty of free parking.
Yeah. So the idea is, you know, to create interaction and, and if, if it's closed, you're getting rid of a demographic of people. I know a lot of people that I grew up with do not go to State Street. Why? Because they're worried about getting their kids run over by bicycles, they're worried about safety, you know, not, not enough police patrolling down there? And so this is not something that just happened, this is a long time thing that's been happening with our city government. They neglect the downtown area and so the locals don't go there. Well, who do you think is gonna be spending most of the money? The locals.
All right, another yes or no question with a quick, uh, explanation. Do you support or oppose a moratorium on construction of new hotels in Santa Barbara? Uh, Tony, you're first, Mr.?
Well, I, I don't know enough about it, but I, if I just had a shoot from the hip right now, I'd say probably, you know, the market's gonna determine, you know, if, you can't open up twelve karate schools and expect all of them to do well, right? So there, the market determines the success of, of that. So I think for us to establish a, a moratorium on something that may establish itself, I I think, you know, we're part of a free market. We're not part of a, you know, of a, of a, of a control type of government. So, I think we need to let things happen the way they happen. And if they don't have success, then maybe that is going to be the next apartment building that gets turned into housing like they did in Galita, you know what I mean? Where it turns into an advantage, so.
All right. I'm going to count that as a big no. Oscar?
Yes, I believe that we're, we're facing a housing crisis and the market already spoken. There's a downturn in hotel uses and to the point where the hotels are having an issue housing their staff and they're actually using those hotel rooms to house their staff to work the hotels that are not being used as is now. So, I'm against building new ones. We need to build more housing.
All right. And then one more quick yes or no. Um, uh, are you for or against the proposed one-half cent sales tax increase on the November ballot and why? Oscar?
Yes, because we're facing a deficit. If we pass the sales tax, we'll be able to address that de, deficit significantly and also have, uh, a surplus to then invest in other, uh, areas of the city and programs. Um, it, it's going to go to support our first responders, to support our parks and, and making sure that, uh, our businesses can be, um, thriving. And, um, if we, this is an important point that I want everyone to make sure to hear, that if we don't take advantage of passing this tax now, specifically that it's benefiting the city alone, just the city, then we run the risk of the county or the state passing a tax in our city and then all that money goes to the state or the county, as opposed to this tax specifically going to us and only us. So, if we don't pass this now, we're going to lose that and the, every cent that we spend is going to be going to the state and the county. So, don't let this opportunity pass you by. Make sure you support it.
All right. Tony, yes or no?
So, this is, this is the issue with our, with our government right now, with our council, our council, is that how are first responders not number one on the list? Why are we worried about them? They should be number one. Our police, our fire, they should be number one. They should never be an issue. And if we're spending incorrectly, if we're not being fiercely responsible, as a businessman, I can't do that. You know, I buried myself in a hole trying to stay open during COVID because the city shut me down, you know? And so, I'm digging myself out of that hole. But as, you know, the government, it's a different, you have a bigger responsibility. All of our tax dollars go in there. And if you can't be responsible enough to control that and then threaten with, 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 uh, with public safety first, that's ridiculous. That should be number one, should be taking care of our kids, schools, all the stuff that's important should be number one and everything else should fall into place. We shouldn't be spending, you know, millions of dollars on a bike trail that hardly anybody uses.
So, yes or no on the?
That would definitely be a no.
No. Okay, thank you. All right. Um, I just, uh, we're, we got two questions that we're going to ask you individually. Um, Oscar, if you win a new term, uh, you'll have, uh, you'll be set to have sat on the council for nine years. Uh, as you've stated, you're well-known for being out and about and, and for being responsive to constituents, but as a governance matter, can you identify one issue on which you've had real impact?
Yeah, absolutely. So, when it came to, I'll give you a couple. So, when it came to the city, uh, having more transparency and communication with the residents, I pushed since day one that I was elected to build a, uh, have the city provide a reporting app that the residents can use to report any issues they come across, uh, in the city so that they can immediately contact city staff about whatever issue they've come across and have it quickly addressed. So, that was something huge that I was, uh, passionate about and I got to, to make happen. The other one I was really passionate about is protecting our residents' First Amendment rights when it comes to city council meetings because there have been multiple mayors that had tried to change the way that the public gets to speak to us. And I opposed it and fought and made sure that people's right to speak in public at meetings was preserved.
Are you talking about allowing Zoom comment as well as, uh, not shortening the amount of time people could talk?
That's correct.
All right. So, uh, uh, Tony, we have a question for you. Um, as discussed in my interview of you for my story, uh, you've been living outside of the district and, uh, we know that you have a very successful business on the west side, on San Andres Street. Uh, but you, uh, moved out of the district and you recently moved back in. So, can you address that and talk about that? Um, you know, are you moving back because you want to run? Um, how can people who don't know you, who haven't been in your dojo, you know, accept and believe that you're really most concerned about what's happening on the west side if you've been living in Buellton and other places, you know, most recently?
Well, look, this is, this is, you know, this is kind of like a city thing, right? Um, you know, what's the real issues? We're talking about where I live. I live on the west side. I have a place on the west side, you know, whether I have, you know, um, I've been there the whole time, but I grew up on Figueroa, I was born on Figueroa Street. I lived on Figueroa for 12 years. I lived on, on Islay. I've been part of the community for a long time. My business has been there for 28 years. I deal with the community every single day. I get there at eight o'clock in the morning at my business and I'm normally there till eight 30, nine o'clock at night. So, you know, I've been trying to get back to Santa Barbara. By the way, I got kicked out during COVID. I had a landlord decided he wanted to move his kid into my house and I couldn't find a place because everybody was moving in from LA who's working remotely, you know, and there was an option of a, you know, two-bedroom for $5,000, you know, uh, and, and it didn't work for my family of, of five of us, you know? So, the idea is that, you know, I'm fully vested in here. I have, I, I own my, the building that I have my business in. So, that's my future right there. I don't make a lot of money. Like I said, a third, a third, a third. Right now, I'm digging myself out of the hole right now. But, um, so the thing is, is that I'm invested in the community. I have ownership on the west side. I want to see that the west side thrive. It's not about, you know, 100% uh, you know, um, about, you know, promising to make changes when you've been elected for the last six years. When, it's about making things happen now. I'm a leader. I've always been a fighter. I've been a multi-time national champion and I didn't get there by myself. I got there by having good training partners, people that were critiquing me, keeping, people that were boosting me forward. And so, I want to be able to be that person for the community. You can come to me, we'll figure out a way. You know, I used to wear this shirt that said, problem solver. I want to solve some problems. I don't want to just watch people manage programs, show up to events and know facts, but show up to events just to be at an event. We have more nonprofits than anybody in, in the country. Why aren't we using these resources to help fund things that we need around the town? You know, we're neglecting our kids that were hurt during COVID, that didn't get good educations, but they, they were allowed to graduate. What are they doing now? They're lost. They don't feel like they can go to city college. So, let's give them some vocational training to get them to the next level. We have, I have a lot of ideas and I know there's people in the community because I run another nonprofit that, you know, again, we're able to, to come together to make things happen. That's what I'm going to bring to the table. I'm going to bring that, that leadership idea. I'm going to, the life skills of being a business owner, that's what I'm going to bring to the city to help the west side improve and the overall, overall community.
Thank you, Tony. Um, okay, one more question and then we'll, uh, go to closing statements. Um, in the last five years, the state of California has spent $24 billion on homelessness programs and the unhoused population has increased by 50,000 statewide. In Santa Barbara County last year, total spending on homelessness was $112 million and the unhoused population increased 12%. What is wrong with our policies? Oscar?
I, you know, I believe it's pretty short-sighted to blame the government for an issue that's going to require a multifaceted, um, approach. Like, you know, the, you know the saying, it takes a village to raise a child? Well, these, in my eyes, these are all children and it takes an entire village, not just the government. So, I went out and I had a, a joint meeting with a, a gathering, I guess you can say a congregation of, of local religious leaders. And I asked them, according to your belief system, you as well should be helping us address this issue. How can we work together? And because of that meeting, a few of those institutions allowed, um, safe parking to happen in their locations and also give clothing, food, things like that. So, again, I don't think that this is an investment. I don't think it's a bad investment. We're, ultimately, the government's there to help people and that's what we're doing. And, and I believe housing is the answer. So, we need to provide more housing.
All right. Thank you. Tony?
Repeat the question again?
Sure. In the last five years, the state of California government, state government, has spent $24 billion on homelessness program and the unhoused population has increased by 50,000 statewide. In Santa Barbara County last year, total spending on homelessness was $112 million and the unhoused population increased 12%. What is wrong with our policies?
Well, I would have to say, you know, administrative issues, you know? If, if you can't find a solution, you know, that means people aren't coming together enough to make it happen. I think, you know, as a community, we should be more in charge of what's happening locally, not the state. The state doesn't know what's happening in our city per se exactly, you know, but they're, they're passing rules for everybody, you know? So, what we need to do is take more ownership of that. And if we do that, then we're going to solve the local problems, you know? And, and I think, you know, mental health is one, probably the biggest problem, you know? So, if we're not addressing mental health, if we're not addressing drug addiction, I'm not saying vilify these people, but get them the help they need. And sometimes that means you have to, you have to take them in, you know, to help them, from themselves. So, I think, uh, if we look at it from a local standpoint, and I know, you know, this community's incredible for coming together to making things happen. So, it's just a matter of putting resources together. I know as a kid, uh, my church, we were always speeding the homeless. We were always giving out clothes. We always had a pantry at my church. So, you know, so a lot of churches do that already, you know? So, I know that's already there. We just got to make it more local and take control of it and not depend on the state to, 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 uh, have the, the final say on how things are done.
All right. Well, okay. Thank you both for a really, uh, interesting and enlightening and substantive conversation. I appreciate you being responsive to the questions, uh, which doesn't always happen. Uh, so now we're, I'll give you each two minutes for a closing statement. Uh, Tony, you go first.
Well, the reason I'm running, again, you know, it started off with the business district that I'm in, but it really comes down to this. It's, I, I'm about the community. I want to make sure that the community is going to thrive. I'm about small business. I want small business to be, to be the cornerstone of, of, of Santa Barbara. Um, I've helped many people start their own businesses because I know that they get stuck at a certain paywa, wage, but if they can start their own business, then they, they can have financial freedom if they work it the right way. So, having programs is going to be important for us, you know, youth programs. Like I said, there was a whole demographic of kids that just didn't get educated very well. So, we need to find some type of programs for them. So, it, it's going to be about, um, spending money on, in our own community with the, the most, most in need. And again, you know, we're talking about housing. We're talking about, you know, uh, just having an opportunity to get ahead, to have an opportunity to stay in Santa Barbara, um, in the long-term. And I think, um, with the leadership that I have, I think I can push us in that direction. And I'm willing to work with the other council members to make things happen. You have to compromise. I get that. I mean, I, again, being the youngest of 12, I learned how to compromise real quick. You know, don't beat me up. I'll make you pancakes. You know, I mean, I got it, you know? So, you know, we can figure this out, but we just got to be, have, have that mindset. And, and when that happens, I think change happens.
All right. Oscar, last word.
Thank you. So, yeah, I just want to ask again for the support of my, uh, district to continue, uh, serving you like no other council member ever has in the history of our community. Um, again, I want to reach, reach out to multiple different organizations, like I have been, to address these issues. You know, I've reached, reached out to the school district to have them open up the west side school campuses to the public so that they could have open, safe play areas. Uh, I reached out to our state senator so we could streamline the, uh, business permit application so people can have businesses in the city. I've reached out to my congressman so that, uh, we can work with UCSB to open up a new community center on the Harding School Elementary that'll be open to everyone in the city, not just the west side. So, please continue to support me so I can support your housing needs. I've, I've, uh, voted consistently in support of tenants' rights and I will, you know, you're voting for somebody who's been consistent. I've, I've lived here my whole life. I've, uh, voted in, in, uh, in agreeance with the public and I want to continue doing that.
All right. Thank you. It's been an incredible evening. Uh, thank you so much for participating. Thanks to everybody here in attendance, as well as everybody watching on the live streams. And I have to say, it's just an amazing day to see such qualified, talented, four Mexican-American candidates running for office. And I think the people who are envisioning district elections were envisioning a moment like this. And, um, all of you should be proud, even District One, this contest, for, uh, putting yourself out there. And thank you so much. And, uh, we know that everyone's more informed because of this forum. Thank you.